Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. This evening, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Troop 474 from Leonard Lawrence with us. So I'd ask them to come up to the front. And then we'll follow that with the invocation by Deacon Ted Powell from the Church of the Holy Spirit at 1305 Thomas Drive. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight to consider the matters before us, let us do so filled with your grace and your blessings, so that those who speak, speak not only from their heart, but with words that clearly express the concerns they bring before this council, so that those who must decide are able to do so with wisdom, compassion, and in the best interest of all the people of this fine city. Enable each of us, despite what differences we may bring to this meeting, find a sense of peace and understanding in the discussions that take place, so that, working together, we can make a difference in the lives of those we call our neighbor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Thank you, Deacon Powell, and thank you to Troop 474 of Leonard Lawrence. I will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Collins.
Here.
And Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda, Consent Agenda, Claims and Advisory Committee Reports, 5A, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
My computer is blanked out. I'm going to vote yes, and I need computer help, please.
Okay. Mine is kicking, and votes out anyway, so... All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an "ask" risk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Councilwoman Welch.
Hold on.
Okay.
We're close. I say yes.
Okay. All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6, Approval of the Claims. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. Make motion to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Got four voting in favor and one abstaining, with Councilman Preister abstaining due to conflict. Motion carries. Oh, who did I miss? Okay, just a second. Let me look back. Okay. I've got five, too. So we got five yes votes and one abstaining, with Councilman Preister abstaining. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7, Special Presentations. 7A, Bellevue Food Pantry. We have Deanna Wagner with us this evening.
Um, hello. Want me to print this? Do I need to do this?
What's that?
Do I need to sign in?
Oh, yeah, just sign in and state your name and address.
Okay.
You're free to present.
My name is Deanna Wagner. Address is 106 Lafayette Lane in Bellevue, 68005. And so, thank you for having me here. Want to give a huge shout-out first to the city for hosting the food drive for us last week. We were blown away by the response. Kind of been simply in awe and profoundly grateful for the support that we received from everybody in the city. The amount of money raised and the food donated will go a long way to help us over the next several months. Overall, the whole community has been unbelievable. So every day, we have people dropping off food, calling us, seeing how they can help. We are internally grateful for all of that. And we've been receiving food items, personal care items, monetary donations. So as soon as that is coming out, coming into us, it is going right back out. We typically see about 25 to 30 families come to the pantry every day. But yesterday, we saw 55. Today, we saw 48. Tomorrow, we'll be even busier, just because we have extended hours. So we'll open till 6:00 tomorrow. And then Thursday will also be a busy one for us. So we anticipate these numbers to continue, especially as people start feeling the pinch of not having their SNAP benefits. I wanted just to share some numbers that we, about the people that we've been serving. So I'll go back a couple of years. So October 23, we served a total of 1,108 people. Last year, we served 1,708 people in October. And this October, we served 2,062 people, with 121 of those of the 591 total families having military families or being veteran-associated. So that is a large amount of numbers. It was hard to keep up. I anticipate the rest of the year is going to be the same. So clearly, the need is growing. I think that might be a couple more reasons besides the need, but also, we're a little bit more prevalent in the community. People know about us. And we've tried to make it easier for families to come in and get assistance from us. We try not to have a lot of hurdles for people. All we ask is that they live in Sarpy County, basically. If you coming to the door, we're assuming you're in need. The shutdown and suspension of SNAP benefits has really brought together a perfect storm for families experiencing financial hardships. Many are having to choose between food and medicine, or food and paying their rent. That's where we step in. Even when the shutdown ends and SNAP benefits are restored and people are paid, it can take one to six months for people to catch up, so their finances are back on track. So even if this ends tomorrow, we're going to see this continue for a few months at least. These people are trying very hard. They work very hard, and they're just trying to take care of themselves and their families. In fact, approximately 80% of the people that we serve have at least one family member in the household who's working. Many other households have people on fixed income, like seniors or those with disabilities. So those have been extremely hard times for them, trying to budget with everything going on. In many instances like that, we're able to deliver people food as well, just right to their doorstep. One thing that's become even more crystal-clear in the last several months is that our new space is needed. We are literally bursting at the seams. So you can ask any of our volunteers, or Jill Connor, or myself, it is hard to get everybody moving around in that pantry. We're taking in a lot of food, but right now, we're taking a lot of the food to the new pantry space, just so we have room to navigate around. All of the ones that was from the food drive with the city was brought to the new pantry. So we have the ability to spruce out and have volunteers in to help sort things. So we continue to inch forward to our goal with our Capitol campaign, but we aren't quite there yet. So please keep spreading the word on the new pantry and what we need, because the Bellevue city deserves all of that. I would end just by saying again how truly grateful we are for the support of the city and its citizens, so thank you. And if you happen to come across the pantry staff or our many volunteers, please give them extra thanks, too, just because they've been working extra-long hours, coming in on days that they normally wouldn't, just trying to meet the need, trying to get the food out to the people that need it the most. We hear a lot of really tough stories, and dealing with people in crisis can be challenging sometimes, but we're getting through it with everybody's support. So we have the absolute best volunteers. They are the wonderful people that help us every single day, and they are the true heroes for us. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me? Or Jill Connor is here as well, and she can answer things, too.
Any questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Deanna, I appreciate you being here. It was interesting seeing Friday what it looked like as all the volunteers were working. Even though you were closed, it was extremely busy.
Yes.
So I appreciate that the community has turned out. I hope they keep providing some support with Thanksgiving coming and then Christmas, to have all of this going on right now. I'm very concerned, and I know as things come in, they are going out the door at the same rate. So I'm going to make a motion, as soon as we finish this, to see about a little more support.
Thank you.
But I appreciate you being here. I appreciate all those volunteers. I'm seeing some and hearing more about some of the real challenges out there in the community. You helped us understand a little bit about the military and some of those members being impacted, too. We're all one community, and we need to pull together.
Absolutely. Thank you. I will say, we do get a lot of food coming in right now, and a lot of the money that we are getting with monetary donations, we're kind of setting that aside. So when the food is depleted a little bit more, we have that as backup. So that's where we'll can purchase food beyond that. But I will say, we've been having just people call us every single day. We're having people coming in, just, hey, I saw something onsite. Or people coming from, we got some donations from Dallas, Texas, from just all over the place. So the word is out. So I really appreciate, especially Phil bringing that to light on the city site, and just anybody that's sharing it is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
Deanna, thank you for the update. For people that want to, because there are people in our community that truly want to help, but they don't know what to do, where to go. Is there someplace that you post the information for what you're needing? Or someplace that people can go versus calling you every day to find out what it is that's needed? Can you share that with us?
Sure. They can go to our website, which is Bellevuepantry.org, or on our Facebook page, if they look up for the Bellevue Food Pantry, we're on there. They're free to call, but honestly, if it's something that you use in your household, we can use at the pantry. That's kind of what I've been saying to people. We can take fresh items. We can take frozen, refrigerated, non-perishable items. We have, we can take anything. And if people do have questions, they are surely free to give us a call. But, yeah, we can take anything that you would use in your household. The only thing we don't give out are expired items.
Okay. And then, can you also give us an update on the Capitol campaign? I mean, if you're prepared now to do that, otherwise, where we can get? Because I know that's a big ask, but there are people this time of year that are in a very giving spirit, and we know that it's going to go to a great organization.
Yeah. Jill, do you want to?
Thank you for asking that question. So there's a lot of end-of-year giving happening right now, and so I would encourage anyone to, they can reach out to us directly. They can give through our secure website. We are 501(c)(3), and we send tax letters out to everyone, and just mail them to the 1912 Hancock Street. And if it's some sort of distribution, or somebody wants to talk through legacy giving, please give us a call, because I'd love to sit down with anyone, give them a tour, and sit down and talk about what that process could look like for them.
How much is the, do you know how much, obviously you do, that the Capitol campaign is needing?
Yep. So it's, the total campaign is approximately 7.2 million. We've raised 3.5 to date, and so we're about halfway there.
And then our ETA on the opening of the new site?
December of 2026. We anticipate that we'll start construction March 1st of next year, so hopefully have a shovel in the ground. We've already purchased all of the walk-in coolers and freezers, the mechanical and the generators, thanks to the generosity of CDBG funds at the city. And then we're looking forward to purchasing, getting that fire suppression system installed, and then just the rest of the mechanical, so we can move forward with construction.
Awesome. Yeah. Continue, if you don't mind, continue to come back and give us updates, because we love hearing the good stuff that our citizens in our city is doing for our people.
Jill, would you just state your name and address for the public record?
Yes.
And sign in?
Jill Connor, 11416 Brown Circle, Omaha 68164.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Before I get back to Councilman Preister, just a huge thank you to you, Deanna, and you, Jill, and all your volunteers, and the whole food pantry. Very needed service, and you guys do a great job, and we're proud to have you here in Bellevue.
Thank you.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. It's unusual times for a lot of people, and it's an unusual request, but we have a Community Betterment Fund, and that Community Betterment Fund is to better the community. I don't know of too many things that would be better than to take some of those funds and give them at this time to NCAP, to the food pantry, not in the Capitol campaign, but for actual food that can buy things that normally won't come in as donations. So with that said, I'm going to make a motion to approve $5,000 for NCAP to come from the Bellevue Community Betterment Fund.
I'll second that. Second that.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Now, obvious question, can we? Okay. All right. Any other questions?
And obviously, it's in our budget. We have the funds. Everything's good to go on that. Okay. Perfect.
We do.
All right. Any more questions? Motion by Preister, second by Burns, to fund NCAP with $5,000 out of...
Community Betterment.
Community Betterment. All right. Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 8, Organizational Matters. We have none this evening. Item 9, Approved Citizen Communication. We did not receive any requests. Item 10, Liquor Licenses. Again, no request. Item 11, Ordinances for Adoption Third Reading. 11A, Ordinance Number 4194, Request to amend Section 5.17, City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding the allowable multifamily residential density in the PS Plan subdivision overlay applicant Great Lakes Capital. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4194, An Ordinance to Amend Section 5.17 of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, zoning ordinance regarding the planned subdivision district to provide for the repeal of the ordinances inconsistent herewith, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Thank you. And do I have a motion for 11A? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 4194. Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch?
I just wanted to make sure, this is our ordinance regarding the property for the workforce housing, correct?
Councilwoman Welch, yes.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make a comment on this. You know, workforce, workforce housing is for our entry-level people, meaning somebody who just graduated, just became a firefighter, somebody who just became a police officer, somebody who just graduated from nursing school and has a lot of student debt. And it's going to give these people an opportunity to have a place to live. You know, I recently, recently read, it was recently posted in Nebraska, in the past decade, we have lost 34,000 residents and nearly $3 billion in income from our tax base. This gives people the opportunity to stay here, to stay local, to contribute back to the community, to add the youth, to continue this population moving on. Based on that, and I understand it's met all of the city ordinance requirements, based on that, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Any other comments or questions on 11A? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody who weighed in on this issue. It has gotten a lot of attention from all of the council members. I think we've listened carefully. There were no foregone conclusions that I saw or heard in any of my discussions. It was one that I put a whole lot of time in myself personally, and for good reason. It's an important issue. I think we have done our due diligence, and we will vote as we see best. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11B, Ordinance Number 4198, Request to Rezone Lot 1 and Outlot A, Mora Acres, Being a platting of part of Tax Lots 12 and 13, Located in the southwest quarter of Section 22, Township 14 North, Range 13 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, From AG to RA and RG8, For the purpose of residential development. Applicant is Orchard Valley Inc., General Location 1902 Lola Avenue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4198, An Ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, As provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 4146, By changing the zone classification of land located At or About 1902 Lola Avenue, More particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, And to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion for 11B? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance Number 4198.
Second.
Motion by Casey, signed by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. After our meeting, we got a letter last meeting that there was a concern by a neighbor. I don't know if he's here, or if we've heard any follow-up. It was about the entryway and the drive-in from somebody concerned, but in driving by, I don't see where there's any other access. It's, I mean, I used to ride my horse through that area, and it was kind of farm fields. And going across Mud Creek, there's one way in and one way out. I don't think there can be anything else, so I don't know. We, we did hear, and we did listen, but I don't see we can do anything with that.
Tammy, do you have anything to add to that?
The one thing I would add, I believe the crux of the letter was, you know, a request of sorts to have Lola Avenue dead-end, but our subdivision regulations specifically does not allow for dead-end streets. It's, our regulations specifically state that we will have streets that go through. So I think at the end of the day, we, we, you are correct, Councilman Preister, that there's, Lola Ave is the access point to that property, the main access point. And again, our subregs would prohibit having a dead-end street there.
Tammy, is the building that's going to be built right near the entrance going in, and then the current acreage has got that long driveway going way to the back, that'll still be separated? The 10 acres there and the 1 acres will be up front, not in the back?
Correct. So, so the plat still allows for the current property owner who has the home there. He will, that will not change. What this plat does is it does facilitate the future development to the south of that property. So it's, it's safe to assume, yes, one day there will be development, you know, in that area to the east of the current Spring Creek. And again, Lola Avenue was always meant to go through as a through street there.
Okay. That's what it looked like. Thank you very much.
Any more questions? Okay. We have a motion by Casey, second by McCaw to approve Ordinance Number 4198. Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11B1, Small Subdivision Plat, Lot 1 and Outlot A, Mora Acres. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve Item 11B1, Small Subdivision Plat of Lot 1 and Outlot A, Mora Acres.
I'll second that.
Motion by Collins, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
We have five yes votes and one no vote, with Councilman Casey voting no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11C, Ordinance Number 4199, Request to Rezone Lot 6, Tiller's Fourth Edition, From BG to RG8 PS, For the purpose of multifamily residential development With Site Plan Approval. Applicant Erhart Griffin &amp; Associates, General Location 1724 Wilshire Drive. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4199, An Ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, As provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 4146, By changing the zone classification of land located At or About 1724 Wilshire Drive, More particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, And to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 4199.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch? Oh, oh. Okay. Please vote. Oh, sorry. Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, my, my last vote was for this item, my no vote. I don't know if you can change that.
I can go back and change it.
But, and I will be a no vote for this item. And, and I just want to be clear that I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of workforce housing. I think the applicant has done an amazing job of putting something together to make this work. I'm okay with the density. I'm okay with 1.5 parking. What I'm not okay with is, is the proximity to the villas that are directly below that rechainings wall. And again, for that reason, I'll be a no vote on this item.
So we're good changing that last vote, right? Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, we had an exchange about the parking on Wilshire and Wall. I'm thinking it should be pretty easy to switch the no parking from the west side of Wilshire. To the east side where there's no housing. If somebody were to visit or park on the street, it would be better that they didn't have to cross a street. That they would be right there by the curb for safety reasons. Is that something Public Works can just be contacted to make the shift after, not immediately. But in the future since it's more likely to be of help than harm.
Yes, that's a conversation we can have, I think. The street department has just a standard format they use for north, south and east, west. And so what is currently posted out there just follows kind of their, their standard protocol, but. I, that could be looked at.
Okay, there's no mailboxes or any other kinds of things or driveways, so it seems like it would be easier, thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion by Welch, second by Collins to approve ordinance four one nine nine, please vote.
I have five yes votes, one no vote with Councilman Casey voting no, motion carries. And for the record, per Councilman Casey's request, we've got. Six yes votes on item. Eleven B one, so.
Thank you. Item twelve ordinances for public hearing, we have none this evening, item thirteen ordinances for introduction first reading, we have none. Item fourteen public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation. Of one one three two zero South Forty Seventh Street Bellevue. Nebraska six eight one three seven, and I will open up fourteen A for public hearing, if there's anyone here wanting to speak, please come forward. Uh, we'll, we'll, actually, we'll start with the planning or the inspector.
Good evening, everyone, I'd like to start with a short presentation on one thirteen twenty South Forty Seventh. And I'd be happy to answer any questions afterwards.
You're not tearing that down, are you?
So this stru- structure suffered severe fire damage on basically about Halloween night of twenty twenty four. As you can see, it was pretty heated. A lot of heat in the fire in the garage area that went up into the attic area. And above the living area, you can see these holes up in here. That were from the fire that was in the attic area. And so during the distinguishing of the fire, there's a lot of water that went down through the structure into the living area. On down into the basement also. There's a lot of debris left over from the fire that's still there after one year on the driveway. You can see all the charred rafters and everything that's pretty much. Total loss on the roof part portion of it, a lot of debris still laying on the side yard, a lot of nails and. Different sharp objects that are still there after one year. Some more pictures of the underside of the rafter area. This is the living area where you can see all the ceiling has dropped from the water entering the property. The same thing happened in the basement, basically all the ceiling is dropped also from all the gallons of water that have been put through the structure to put out the fire. There's been two notices that were sent out to the homeowner. The homeowner did respond to both, both notices. His explanation at this point was they were in a dispute with the insurance company. And he would like some more time, but it's been twelve months. Any questions?
Mike, so in your opinion. Anything can be redone, is it feasibly possible to restore the home?
Well, it's, anything can be restored, it's just depending on how much money you want to put into it. Under one conversation I did have with the owner, his intent was to try to have it torn down. Like I said, it's a dispute between himself and the insurance company.
Any questions for Mike? Councilman Prester.
Mike, you've dealt with these situations before with fires and with insurance companies. This is a whole year and I would assume the insurance company has plenty of pictures, they've sent people out. Is there anything in your awareness that they could learn differently now than they've already got?
No, and if, if you were to pass the resolution tonight, they would still have another thirty days. To investigate anything that's still in question before anything would ever happen on our part.
And that thirty days would potentially even be extended because we still would have to have a contract with somebody to demolish it, so. There would still be quite a bit of time yet to finish resolving.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mike, if we pass this resolution tonight to condemn this and. You know, this has been like this a year and this is in my ward and I get a lot of questions about this property. And you keep, we keep saying, well, we're waiting for the insurance company, so we condemn this. Does, and maybe Amy answers this, does the lien go against the homeowner, go toward the insurance company? I mean, for, for us to get reimbursed for the cost on this.
Well, first off, if it were to get, be condemned, the owner would have thirty days to remove the property himself or demolish the property himself.
And not, a lot of times they don't.
A lot of times they don't. If we move into have the hu- hu- home demolished, you know, under the city of Bellevue. And that lien, that money that was provided to do the demolition is not returned or paid back to the city, then a lien would be placed on the property.
So the lien would be placed on the property, okay. And then is it, obviously it's up to them to continue hashing it out or our, our, our job is done and then they're on to figure out what they need to figure out.
Yeah, I would refer to Amy on that one, but.
Okay, thanks.
Anything to add?
No, I, I don't have anything to add unless you have other questions.
I was going to say that once we have made the resolution to condemn it. If the homeowner doesn't take it down, we take it down, then lien goes on the property and then we're out of it. And it's up to the, the homeowner and the insurance people to figure it out from that place forward.
That's correct, it would run with the, with the property, with the land. The city doesn't, would not have any interest between the homeowner and his or her insurance company.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, public hearings open, so you can come forward. Just state your name and address for the record and sign in, please.
My name is Jeff Kunkel, my mailing address is one one three two zero South Forty Seventh Street. And just as a note, the zip code is in the records there, it's six eight one three seven, it's actually six eight one three three. I don't know if it makes any difference to anybody, but I did notice that. But other than that, I'm temporarily living at seven oh five seven. Flint Drive, unit number eighty in Papillion, while all this goes on. First of all, I'd like to say that the Bellevue community as well as Mr. Christensen, everybody has been very, very helpful. And we actually feel the same way, we were ready to have it torn down and taken care of and. We gave the insurance an opportunity to do that. And we had our new home plans already drawn up within three weeks of the fire. Unfortunately, there's a disagreement with the insurance company, they believe that they could use. Most of remaining materials, including electrical, which I know. And there's a number of things that were just not realistic that they were saying they wanted to do. In, in my opinion, in an effort to delay and delay and hopefully that I would reneg. Or, or give in. They did send an adjuster out, they gave us about a third of the amount of the money that it's going to take to rebuild the house. That is now tied up with our mortgage company because the check came out with their name on it also, so. We've been in negotiations since, the insurance company refused to come out to our house. The first representative of the insurance company showed up at our house in late August. That's the first time the insurance company set foot on our property for the whole time. The point in all this is we've been wanting to tear this down, we fully agree, we feel bad for our neighbors, we don't like that site being there. It has been a, a, an emotional. Roller coaster, but. We're prepared, we know we have to do something with it and, and we had the same questions as, as Mr. Prester did also along the way is. Does everybody have what they need, they've had the investigators come out trying to find cause of the fire, never found a cause. The reason we didn't tear it down is for the reason like I told you, they had not been out to even look at it until it was. Beginning of August, July twenty fifth, or right around that timeframe, so that's why we've been hanging on and not taking action, so for that. You know, we do apologize, but it's, it's what we have to do. So, you know, the December fourth, we understand, we're, we're fully understanding of what has to be done by the city, that's, that's not a matter. We may need a little more time, our, our contractor is Ideal Designs and. He's prepared, he's, I, I'm in contact with him on a weekly basis, he's a really caring individual and on a weekly basis he calls. And said, are we ready yet, we're yet, we're ready yet, he says the moment I give him a call, he's sending somebody down here to Bellevue to get the permit. And take it down, that's how ready we are, we, we are ready to go. Looks like we, we'll have to go ahead and take some action, but December fourth. As you mentioned, might be a little tough as far as getting everything lined up and everything, although even as, as prepared as we are, we don't know how long. The permit lasts or, or how long it takes to get it and, and for us to get the ball rolling. December fourth seems realistic, but I'm a novice, I don't know. So, again. My, I, I don't know what else, what else to say, but I forgot to put my name down here.
Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kunkel, thank you for coming before us and giving us the background and, and help us to understand the situation you're in. Do you think by issuing this condemnation order, this will help with regards to the insurance company? Working their way through their mysterious ways they do?
What I honestly believe is they would use it against us. Saying they didn't have that evidence, they didn't have time to look at it, they'll find some way based on the responses that we've had in the past. So I don't think from that way it, it matters either way, we, you know.
You want to be the good citizen, but your hands are tied based on the responses or lack of responses you're getting from your insurance company.
Very much so, you know, we spent two months just trying to get the phone number. And contact information of the adjuster's information, now, we are represented by a public adjuster and we do have counsel. From them also, but we've been trying not to, I mean, and it appears as if we have a settlement coming. Anytime now, so in other words, last Thursday, we sent in our last. Basically, our last request saying it has to be this or it's not going to be enough for us to recoup our losses. If they do not accept that, then it will go to litigation. And that's going to be another six months to a year before back in our house based on litigation time and then having it built and so forth. So, but we're prepared, and I'm not saying we should leave it up that long, I'm just giving you timeframes of what we anticipate and, and it's just another. Few months, we would rather that if, if they accept it, literally, we should, we were expecting the last two days, again, Thursday, and here we are again. One week later, what do they have to look at, they've had all this time. But we expect an answer, if it goes the way we want, then, like I said, Ryan is ready to. He said he'll, he'll get someone off a job and run it right down, that's literally what he told me, that's how, you know, he wants to get this thing going too.
So I want to make sure I understand this timeline, this house burned in October of twenty twenty four. And the insurance adjuster did not come till August of twenty twenty five?
The desk adjuster, he sent an adjuster. Not until February. And that adjuster.
To the site.
To the site, and he was a, a third party adjuster. And that's what the amount that they gave us in the beginning was based on, however. None of the materials were the quality and grade of material in our house. And it was missing a ton of things and it did not, it did not even take into account the method. That they wanted to take, in other words, reusing some of the lumber and reusing. My public adjuster actually wrote an adjustment their way and our way. And their way was more expensive than our way. And that's based on exactimate and supporting the walls, I mean, doing everything that needs to be done. And they denied it the whole time saying, and, and saying is basically because I did not follow their instructions. To go down their rabbit hole of, of reusing. Some of the, you know, materials and stuff. First of all, they, after two weeks, they sent me a letter saying they could go without covering me because I was obstructing because I didn't go their way. And then, and then they just kept on doubling down and doubling down and, and then they sent this adjustment and they've been sticking with that adjustment and doubling down. Month ago, they said, well, you know that your living expense is about to run out, again, trying to intimidate us to try to settle with them for a lower number. So they, but you know, every time we just think there's a little bit of hope, so in order to. Get this done, we will have to dig into our. To some of the other adjustment money that's non-house related because that's the only thing we have. So everything that we were supposed to use to buy all of our stuff, that's what we're going to have to pay for the demolition with. And wait for later to be resolved, and that's why we've been also putting it off because we'd. Rather not do that.
What a very frustrating process and I'm sorry you're having to go through this.
Very frustrating, a very high emotional toll.
Understandable, so. Question for Mike real quick, so based on what Mr. Kunkel. I have an incorrect, okay, is this worth waiting for or is it, we need to move forward on this and?
Excuse me.
I mean, we're, we're just following city ordinance under eight forty six, basically when a home in this condition is not. Addressed and being brought back into a habitable condition, it's considered a public nuisance.
Got it.
We've had several complaints from the neighbors that are tired of looking at it and living next to it. And so we've taken the next step, which goes on to Susan, the city clerk, and presents it to you folks. And then here we are, we're listening to the owner's reasons as to why. At this point, I think after one year, if the resolution were passed, it wouldn't automatically come down in thirty days like Mr. Prester had said. And as long as they were moving forward at that time to do the demo, we would not move in to interfere with that.
Okay, it's just, it's, it's unfortunate that the insurance company has basically tied everybody's hands. Because of unnecessary reasons, so thank you for coming in front of us.
Mike, do, do we contract the bid, do we bid those out for?
We bid those out, correct.
So we couldn't use his person? I mean, he could, he could bid on it.
He could bid on it, yeah, absolutely.
Lot of empathy. For what he's going through, because I do have, I still, I have several roof claims a year ago. Last June, so, and we're still arguing with some insurance issues on it, so it's a very frustrating time with insurance companies. Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I just have a question for Mr. Kunkel. I kind of want to know, so Councilwoman Welch asked. Sort of this would be like beneficial, you said that, that if we demolish, so if we voted to condemn today. That, you know, maybe it wouldn't be so beneficial, I'm just wondering maybe what you are specifically looking for tonight. Do you? I mean. Do you want us to, I mean, do you want, I mean, I know you want the home condemned and I know you want to rebuild. But I mean, what would be beneficial, you know, from us, if you will, so.
The timing is, is the whole thing, it just, this all came together with the same time we're in our last. Couple, well, we've been, it's, the negotiations have only been a week long, so there's only been two negotiations, they sent one, we sent one, they sent one. And then we sent one back to them, so. If we get, it's, it's just a matter of, if we get word that. They're going to sell for what we want. that's the main reason, one of the main reasons I'm here to tell you is that's, it's, it's right there and it could be. But it's the insurance company. So I, you know, uh, until it's done, it's not done. The main reason I came today was to let you know that we don't disagree and we understand and we just want to let you know that we're responsible citizens. And, and whatever's decided, you know, we, we follow, we follow the law. We would prefer that it be torn down. Um, I, I think knowing that it had to be torn down if we send it, uh, if we send the insurance company that information, they have X amount of time to get in there and get any more evidence. They may not need to if they come back and they agree with us. So that's why I, I don't know really what to tell you on that answer. It's just a matter of a day or two answer. If we get one answer, it's all closed. We take care. If we get another answer, we go to them. So you've got X number of days. It's going to be torn down by such and such a date. If you want any more evidence, you need to get in there and get it right now. My lawyer basically said they would find a way to, to try to use us against us saying, oh, you, you guys had to have it torn down. You should have done this in the first place. Again, to them, it's our fault that we didn't cover that entire roof to keep the rain and the snow from getting in. That's their point of view. And that's why they don't want to cover any more than that initial half, less than half that they gave us. So being a responsible citizen and waiting for the unfortunate time we are the two reasons that I'm here today.
So, and then you, you also said that, so, and you just kind of mentioned that, but I want to be just really clear that you think that if it was condemned, you, you would say within the, so, because we'd have like a thirty day window. But that would be more beneficial to the insurance company is what you're saying? Is that what I'm hearing? Like, for example, you're saying that your attorney has advised you that, that, that may be used against you. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
In an ideal world, just a couple more days when we get the answer would be the ideal situation that any decision on this is, is, was done. But I understand the wheels of everything must go on. I, I, I get that. Uh, in an ideal situation, we would have, you know, another week, you know, but, uh, you know, in the end, it needs to be torn down. And, and, and we'll deal with whatever and my lawyers will have to deal with whatever. I mean, that's, I, I understand that, but in a, in an ideal situation, it'd be nice to have another week, but it just didn't work out that way.
Okay. So, well, so when you say another week, I, I guess I'm.
Before a decision is made, which would give them a, uh, i- if we have to go to court, it would give them a reason, you know, and, and here we can say, look, we were forced to have to do it. And we'll do it. I'm just concerned about the period of only three weeks left after that to get it all done while we're waiting for an answer because I'm not going to take any action until I get that decision. And that brings us closer to the, the timeframe.
But they, but they knew this was coming, right?
No.
So they had no.
Well, I'm sure they did. Would they admit to that? No. That's, to, to them, it's, it's a point of more pressure on us.
To buckle.
To buckle.
Well, and that's kind of my, so, and sorry.
Maybe I'm not hearing. I'm sorry.
No, 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 but is that what maybe you're kind of asking for is for us maybe to extend this out? Or if we were to continue this to the next council meeting, would that be beneficial to you is what I'm asking. It's what I'm kind of the point I'm trying to get to.
Wait until the next, you know, next meeting to go ahead and condemn it. That would give it a month for them to not put it into their decision making and decide whether they're going to take us to court or give us, give us, you know, a, a favorable answer.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I would have no, no, no way to base this on anything, but I mean, how, how confident do you feel? You know, or I guess what are you really thinking? I, I know you're saying maybe another week. I mean, is it kind of up in the airs?
We need to see an answer this week on, on that. And my lawyer will push, uh, beginning tomorrow. That will be a week and he will say, look, where's your answer? Um, so that's why I expect to have my answer in the next one to two days. So.
But I think you've also been anticipating this for a year, right? I mean.
That's the whole thing is it, is it, they consistently have been, you know, gone back on their word and, and done a number of things. And, um, until it's done, it's done. And that's why I'm afraid to commit to anything or ask for anything because I don't know.
And it's been a year, not by your fault, but because of them. And they think at some point, I think this rubber's got to meet the road and there needs to be a decision made that possibly forces their hand. Unfortunately, you might get caught up in the middle of all this, but it could force their hand to do something.
So you're saying that it might be beneficial?
Uh, that's the way I see it. It's just the insurance company seems to be trying to run all of this and maybe we need to let them know, not in our town. Our town, we take care of, we take care of things. We take care of our properties and you need to take care of your client. And at some point you and I have a private conversation because I want to know who the insurance company is.
I, I'm careful not to use that.
Not publicly, so.
Not publicly.
So, it, I, I suppose that just kind of leaves me in my mind thinking, so is it beneficial to, like, for example, if, you know, we get through this public hearing and I were to move that we continue this to the, the next council meeting, would that be beneficial or what Councilwoman Welch is saying is, I guess that's why I'm, I'm now, I feel like I just heard two different things.
We could make a motion to approve the condemnation two weeks from to tomorrow, couldn't we, or something along those lines?
I guess my, this is what I'm kind of thinking. That's why I just want clarity because I, I sometimes think with condemnations, you usually have like a, an, a, a property owner that's negligent or, you know, absentee and I, I don't get that sense. And there's a, there's a part of me that's thinking that if I were in the, the, your shoes, what would I want? And I would want, you know, this council to work with me the best that they could or the city to, to work with me because, uh, I, again, I don't feel like you're being negligent is, is what I'm getting at. And I don't like that you've been going through that either, right? That can be really frustrating as it's been said, so.
But what he suggested sounded like something that might work, Mr. Hike, um, you know, about waiting a couple of weeks to, to, that's all I need is a couple of days for them to not have any ammunition one way or another. I don't know what they would do with it. I don't know what they won't do with that. Uh, my lawyer said they very possibly could turn it against it, saying, well, you know, you tore down before and whatever. I, I don't know what they're thinking.
So if we vote for this today, does that thirty days start tomorrow or is there a process where it has to get filed and there's a couple of days and a couple of days and a couple of days?
Mike, you want to step back up?
Yeah. I'd like to reiterate that the thirty days starts, but if, if thirty days have come by and he has a contractor in that's applying for application to tear this down, there's asbestos reports and everything that have to be done. And there's a ten day waiting period on that. So the thirty days is not a magic, magic shut off.
Okay, so if it's.
Extend beyond the thirty days.
So if it's November fourth today, it's not December fourth?
Correct.
Hypothetically, as long as somebody's starting to show some interest, some work, some permits, some, they're, they're starting to take initiative on their side.
It's a process, um, to get to the point where you actually put a bucket into the structure to, to bring it down. You know, there's some legwork to do on the, uh, demo contractor's part, which is going to extend it a little bit further than, uh, thirty days anyway.
So that could buy you a little bit of the time.
And that, that's, that's, that's fine.
And we still could vote for it today, knowing that it's not December fourth, that bingo, it happens.
That would be a good solution.
And then let's just say even at December fourth, uh, nothing's happened, then I have to go put it out for bid and get a contractor and that's going to take some time also. So we're buying some more time there.
So he probably has six weeks anyway.
At least.
Okay. And then the holidays. All right.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you. I too appreciate the emotional trauma of losing so much of your life, your family's life in a fire. That's pretty devastating. As I understand it, no lives were lost and
Right.
that, that's at least some saving grace, but as I empathize with you, I think we've had a good dialogue. I think there is enough time. The insurance company, I can't second guess, but from their behavior, from what you've identified, they may find an excuse no matter what we do. And we can't base our decision on what they may or may not do. But we do know that the neighbors have been complaining, the neighbors have been living with it as, as you have.
Yeah.
And to your credit, you've been sensitive to them and to that situation. Unfortunately, some of it beyond what you could do. But I think we also have to look at the neighborhood, kids that may get in there and may be injured when places like this are left open and unattended. And there's no way it can be sealed at this point. So w- with taking everything into account, I think our best course of action is to move forward on the condemnation. And you knowing that you have more time and you can certainly contact permits. And we're willing to work with you through that process. And whether the insurance company knows we've actually condemned it or not, is probably only up to you and your lawyer to tell them. Because I don't know that they're going to know it. I'm not going to tell them.
No, yeah. And you're absolutely right in everything you said, and I have absolutely no problem with that. Again, uh, we understand what has to be done and, and we care very much for our neighbors. We've tried to go, we, we get our mail every day and we stop and talk to them and let them know how badly we feel and, and, but that only goes so far. They got to stick up both of, and all the entire time. That's not fair to them. So that sounds, everything that's been said here sounds very fair to me. And I do appreciate again the support of the Bellevue community and, and now the, the city council. I do appreciate that. And Mr. Christensen, thank you. Anything else?
And we appreciate that you're being open minded and understanding of it too, especially under difficult circumstances. So thank you and best wishes to you in the future.
And again, that you came and talked to us and let, gave us your side. So we had a little bit more understanding because as Council, Councilman Burns says, most of the time we're in this situation because the homeowner has neglected. And, uh, we're, we're glad we got your side of the story. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing still open. Is there anyone else wanting to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And I'll go to fourteen A one, resolution number two zero two five dash two six, condemning the structures, structure located at one one three two zero South Forty Seventh Street. Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one three three.
Three, three, yep.
Do you have a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor.
I move to approve resolution number.
Your mic's not on.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item fourteen A in the condemnation of this building.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen B, so show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of one four one six Fairfax Road, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight oh oh five. And I will open up fourteen B for public hearing. We'll start with Mike again.
Again, I have a s- short clip. I'd like to show the property. At fourteen sixteen Fairfax. This is coming up on a year's time also. It has been boarded up here more recently. Most of the summer it sat open. Um, it was, um, pretty extensive fire in the, in the family room. As we get through this video, I'll show some of those pictures inside. This, it was pretty hot inside. Most of the windows were broken out, um, from the fire. Um, there were holes cut in the roof by the fire department. Water infiltration throughout the structure also. And the majority of it was on the, uh, family room side that, um, exposed itself out the back door and up the side of the house. This is the family room itself. Another picture of the family room. This moves into the kitchen area. It was a pretty hot fire within the, the structure itself. This is up the staircase to the upstairs. You can see the hot holes in the ceiling upstairs. This is the actual picture at the top of the stairway and all the smoke damage and there's been two notices. One notice sent out certified, which was returned unclaimed, was posted on the structure. There was no response. There was another notice posted on the structure and there's been no response whatsoever as far as obtaining permits or information or contact from the owner.
So, no contact at all with, with the owner?
Not from the owner, no.
Does the mortgage company get notified if there's a mortgage lien on it?
Um, the only contact we had was from a, here towards the end was a a company in Pennsylvania just asked some questions and I sent them the documentation. And then they just asked me to let them know what the results of the hearing were tonight.
So we have no idea if the family is still here or where they are?
They were present. They were actually, um, present on some of the visits on the location. Um, I believe at one point in time they were living in a camper on the driveway. And code enforcement had to step in on that.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Okay, thanks. Public hearing is open for fourteen B. Is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding fourteen B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Item fourteen B one, resolution number two zero two five dash two seven, condemning the structure located at fourteen sixteen Fairfax Road, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight oh oh five. And do you have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty seven.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Mayor, just a note, I went in and looked at it and it looks like somebody's paying the taxes on the property. Because the taxes are brought up to speed.
They have to stay in contact. Item fifteen resolutions. Fifteen A, resolution two zero two five dash two four. A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the annual year end certification of city street superintendent form for two thousand twenty five verifying Robert Joseph Riggs as the city street superintendent from January one, two thousand twenty five to December thirty one, two thousand twenty five. Do you have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve resolution, uh, twenty twenty five dash twenty four.
Motion by Burns, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All the voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two five dash two five, request the Sarpy County Board of Commissioners to cede jurisdiction of tax lots ten B and twelve C to the city of Bellevue. Applicant city of Bellevue, do you have a motion? Councilwoman Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve item fifteen B.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen B, approve the purchase of cruiser cameras and body cameras from Motorola Solutions for use in the new cruisers and retrofitting older cruisers with the new body cameras in a price not to exceed seventy six thousand, four hundred and three dollars and twenty nine cents. Do we have motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Best Cut Lawn Care to replace the retaining wall at the cemetery in an amount not to exceed twenty two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve item sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? I'd just add, I'd seen these walls around town that they've been building and they, they look really attractive. So I think they've done a good job on them. Uh, please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize. Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the three acquisition of temporary easement contracts with Midwest Rightway for Whitted Creek Twenty-Fifth Street project from Linwood to Blackhawk for tracks twelve, twenty, and twenty-three in an amount not to exceed eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the acquisition of temporary easement contract with Midwest Rightway for Mission Avenue Reconstruction and Street Escape for track nine in an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty dollars. Do we have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, approve request and authorize the mayor to sign the amendments to subdivision agreement for Balago South, SID number three twenty-five, applicant city of Bellevue. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the third extension to the Real Estate Broker Services Agreement with CBRE for a one-year term, beginning December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five through December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-six. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve item sixteen G.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen H, approve and authorize the purchase of the new Ventrak forty-five twenty and accessories in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents. Do we have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve item sixteen H.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Harley Davidson motor, police motorcycle lease agreement with Dillon Brothers to lease six police motorcycles for a four-year term ending October one, two thousand twenty-nine in an amount not to exceed one hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the pipeline easement agreement with Trailblazer CO2 Pipeline LLC with city receiving an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Do we have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve item sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen K, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award the construction agreement with Chaz Rana and Sons for the construction of the Bellevue Entertainment District Phase One Public Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed two million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, ninety-eight cents upon receipt of the insurance and bonds by the Public Works Department. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve item sixteen K.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. October report is attached to the packet. Are there any questions? We will file those. Eighteen, there is no closed session and I will take a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any, yeah, please vote. Thanks for hanging in there, scouts. Four seventy-four?
All voting in favor, motion carries.